By his side, did she lift her head? Her eyes were chocolate brown and her easy smile seemed genuine, suggesting a friend delighted by the arrival of her lunch date. "Hello," she said, her voice so warm that Gregory half expected her to stand and hug him. "I..." he started, "are you here for Dr. Bodkin? I'm afraid he's not in today." Philip Bodkin, his mentor and friend who had the lease on the suite, was never in on summer Wednesdays, but perhaps he'd made an exception to his weekly round of golf at the club. The woman stood as if cued, ignoring his question. The magenta scarf drifted down her arms, revealing the rest of the dress, a summer shift that suggested curves without clinging to them. She approached him unencumbered, no purse, no phone, nothing left on the table except the copy of The New Yorker. Everything about her was vibrant. Against the beige backdrop of the waiting room, she seemed to emit a radiant glow. "Dr. Weber?" She extended her hand. "I'm Mira. Thank you for making time for me." When they shook, gripping longer than was customary, he felt like he was tacitly agreeing to something, but he didn't know what. He noticed a pale scar running from her nose to the corner of her lip. He wanted to tap open his calendar to see if he had scheduled this, Mira, months ago and overlooked the appointment. He typically tried not to book anything in his one free hour in the middle of the work week, but he had made some scheduling mistakes recently, an issue he attributed to his problems with live and sleep deprivation. But to completely forget an appointment with someone new? This was a first.
So, just as we're getting near the end of our time together, but just I wanted to touch on what you chose to read right there as well. So we get introduced to Mira, who becomes a obviously very pivotal character because she is our Wednesdays at 1:00 person as well. Did you have any particular inspiration when you thought, came up with Mira's character?
She came in as part of my download with the characters. She announced herself as Mira, and only afterwards did I reflect on that name, how she is a mirror for Gregory in many ways, and she mirrors some of his shame. And so she felt, she evolved as the book evolved for me. I didn't know her relationship to Gregory when I started writing the book. I knew that they were connected to Gregory's past transgression, but I didn't know how. And so as the book unfolded and I figured out who Mira was, it was a revelation to me and really fun to discover her as a character. I'm not sure that it's a typical way of writing a story. Typically, you'd have your two main characters and you would understand what their connection was, but it was all part of this really sort of strange, magical process that I'm so grateful for.
Fantastic. That's really interesting, too. So you said you were working on something new. What are you working on now?
It's another novel. It's called The Other Choice, and it's about a woman who isn't sure if she wants to have a child or not, but her fiance, who is a musician, he, his one requirement is, if they get married, is that they don't have children. So they just decide to be child-free by choice. They make that decision, they commit in marriage, and then her reckless younger sister gets pregnant and it throws all of Ruby's certainty about family and children into turmoil. So it's about how we choose our families and how we create families in different ways while being sort of a rich woman's novel.
Are you setting that locally as well, or is it?
Of course.
Of course.
So much easier. It's so much easier. And there is, there is a big piece set in LA, and the musician goes out to LA. And I keep looking at my calendar thinking, when can I sneak in four days in Santa Monica?
Do you have a projected date for that?
I, I told my agent I'd have it done by Thanksgiving, so I'm trying to stick to that. In fact, I was writing this morning and I'll write again this afternoon. So, once I get going with a project and I get the momentum and I start to really sink into the story and see the story start to, start to form, then I, then I just go with it. So I'm in the go-with-it phase now.
Oh, fantastic. Well, I want to thank you so much for coming and being on our show today. You can find Wednesdays at 1:00 there for you in libraries and bookstores and all the, all the outlets that you normally would as well. And, you know, I hope that you enjoyed your time with us.
It was so enjoyable. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to, for everybody out there who's watching, please join us again the next time for a novel idea, and we will hope to see you again soon out there in the airwaves. So thank you so much again. I'm Noel Bach, your host, and we'll see you next time.
Suicide is preventable, and each of us has a role to play in suicide prevention. Suicide is complex. There is no single cause. And it's not always a mental health issue. It could be loss of a job or home, financial or relationship issues, pain, or leaving the military. Suicide does not discriminate. It affects all ages, races, and genders, veterans or not. If you know a veteran who is struggling, connect with them. Let them know help is available. There is quick and easy access to services in times of crisis. Dial 988, then press 1. Talking about it is okay. Don't keep it inside. Don't be ashamed. Don't wait. Reach out. Find resources at va.gov/reach.
One, two, three, yeah, we've got enough folks here for when it's time.
All right, so we'll put that in.
And another one coming. Yeah, give us one more minute. Marty went to go get something and... Hello. Good, how are you? Uh, yes, good. You have what you need?
Yeah.
All right, yes. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadows School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded by LCTV and aired live. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin the evening with correspondence.
A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center, was received regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Award for March 2024. Long Meadows students honored this month are Nathaniel Vincent from Automotive Technology, Emily Aiken from Graphic and Visual Design, and Joseph Maiolo, Integrated Occupational Prep.
Thank you. Moving on to approval minutes, we have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the March 26, 2024, school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing them, we'll vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yeah.
And yes for me as well. Public speak is up next. If there are any members of the public online, I don't see any. We have no one here. Those are the only folks online, so we're moving on to business with guests, and we are welcoming our Wolf Swamp Road Principal, Mr. Jared Materas, to our meeting this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm gonna let Marty play the video, and then I'll talk a little bit about what you see and highlight some things.
So this is part of our ongoing project to demonstrate how we attempt to cultivate and develop the competencies associated with the vision of the graduate. And so Jared Steven Spielberg Materas is gonna do a great video for us here, and we'll launch it.
So hopefully you enjoyed that, because I definitely did every time I watch it. That's the best part about being in elementary school, right? You get to have all these great things that are displayed around the room and put some funny music to it and have fun with it. So thinking about what I wanted to do for tonight, you know, I was trying to think of different ways to kind of highlight what's, what Wolf Swamp's all about and what we do on a daily basis, and then mold that with, or bring that together with a vision of the graduate and kind of fit those into different buckets. And as you could probably see up there, there's many different things that could, that were displayed that we could fit into different buckets. I really tried to get everything from pre-K to 5, all throughout the building. The beautiful part about this whole thing is this is only a small snapshot of what you would see if you walked into the building throughout the course of the year, right? It's probably about maybe 25%. A lot of the teachers switch things out throughout the year, so I only got a small snapshot there, but it's just great to see all the student work that's up there. And as I put in our title, our scholarly work, as we like to call it. But I want to highlight just a few things I'm gonna do across the grade levels and starting with pre-K. If you notice, there was some work that they had up there about creating lions and lambs and switching seasons. They had different lions that they all made out of paper, paper plates. Each student got to make one. They also made different lambs out of paper plates, so that was in pre-K. There was many other things up there in pre-Ks as well. In kindergarten, this one kind of warms my heart, is if you saw up there, it said if you give a kindergarten or a pencil, what you get. And then the next slide was a, they worked in partners where they actually picked different friendship words for their partner, and they wrote them down with each other. So that was really cool to see and great communication and, you know, SEL work that goes into all that. First grade was another great thing. They, they had systems of the body that they did in different groups, so they made these big, human-sized, I think the teachers actually laid down and the kids traced them out, and then they made the different systems of the body in different groups and labeled them. Second grade, there, there was a piece up there about growing this year, and it was all about setting goals for each other and hopes and dreams. So second grade, they got to pick, they got to decide at the beginning of the year what their goals were gonna be, what they wanted to accomplish by the end of second grade, and hold themselves accountable for that. Third grade, this is another favorite of mine, is I got, what do we have in third grades? 60 kids roughly, 60 opinion letters from students on what would make Wolf Swamp better. Very well written, so I've read through about half of them so far. A lot of them have to do with recess and lunch and the things you might expect, but great pieces. Fourth grade, the longer part of that video there, where you might've got a little seasick if you're watching my camera skills there, they were doing parade floats. So they, each year, this is a standing tradition that they do in fourth grade is, and Mr. Mazza, you would probably love this, is they, they budget. So they have a float and they have a budget, and they have to price everything out, and they have to stay within their budget, and then they have to build their floats, and then they put them on display for all the kids to, for the rest of the school to see. Little description of what their parade float was, how much it cost, and everything that went into it. It's really up to them to what they want to do. It's really awesome. Fifth grade, this, they did this at the beginning of the year. They have words of encouragement that they picked through the guidance of their teachers. And then with that, they also drew some pictures that aligned with those words of encouragement, and they're lined, if you walk up into our fifth grade hallway, up the stairs and then up into the fifth grade hallway, they're lined all the way up, so they get to see them every single day. It's, it's great, especially, I see one particular every single day where I walk down the stairs and it's, it's right there in your face. It's just great. The last one, this one has to do with art, where they did some abstract art and, and thought bubbles. So they needed, they took a picture of themselves and then they did some abstract art of what their thought bubbles might look like. So you can see we have everything from art to science to math to, to music, to reading, to math. It's just, it's amazing to see throughout the day. It's, it's a great opportunity just to give you a quick snapshot of what you would see if you walked into our building.
Well done. Gotta give you some applause on your production skills there.
I'll open for questions and/or any comments to make.
I loved it. It was great. It shows that it's a really creative and caring community, too. And I saw a lot of those dates were very recent. I was impressed.
I just commend the teachers for many examples of project-based learning activities and collaborative assignments, which are highly engaging for kids.
Very much. And a thanks to all the kids. It's, it's a very well-decorated school. There's so much fantastic artwork all over the hallways. Love that for you guys. And I loved those parade floats. That'd be a really cool parade.
Yeah, yeah. I think what jumped, what jumped out for me is this, you know, I've been hearing more people use this phrase, that every kid has a name, a story, and a strength, right? And so all those projects, kids got to represent themselves and who they are and their experiences, but it was also tied to some academic standards, so I thought that was, I thought that was really cool. And Wolf Swamp does a great job of public displays of, showcasing learning. It's, it's really powerful when you walk through, so.
And a lot of focus on collaboration and community. A lot of Wolf Pack and welcome to the Wolf Pack and everybody.
Wouldn't be right if I didn't put anything in there about the Wolf Pack cares.
Very nice. All right, well, thank you so much for coming out.
Appreciate it.
And we look forward to seeing you guys again soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone for your help.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
All right, we are headed into school committee announcements and recognitions. We'll start with the chair report. Just an overview, thanks, we're heading into the busy part of the year, and there are a lot of different events and community things going on, so a big thank you to all the members of our school community for all the work they're putting in to make all of these things happen. And a special shout out to Glenn Burke for some sold-out performance there at Godzilla, rave reviews, so congratulations. And a reminder that speaking of community events, May 14th is the town meeting, so we hope to see everybody there for our annual town meeting. Any other school committee announcements or recognitions?
It's, I just love this time of year when you drive through and see all the kids on the sporting fields. And there's just such a, I mean, I had a hard time finding a parking spot. It just feels like an exciting time of year for kids. My own personal children were very excited about the eclipse and thank you for the glasses, and that was, it was cool. And then the other thing is that there was also a play at Williams, Murder at the Goon Squad, which was great. It was great. Good things are happening.
Yes. Anything else? All right, we are rolling right along into other reports. Superintendent?
Sure. There's a, report in your packet. Went a little overboard this week, so I won't hit everything in here. You can read it at your leisure. Thanks to Mr. Mazza for bringing us together with another district safety team meeting recently. One of the activities that we have before us is a final, fourth and final safety drill, and so before the end of the year, each school will conduct an enhanced lockdown, is the phrase we're using, so a lockdown that's sort of more in line with the avoid, deny, defend model that we've adopted. Concluding a professional development series that I've been involved with, with Director Nilda Irozari, on how to develop and sustain co-leadership models in the areas of DEI. I've launched with, with some help from my admin colleagues, a high-quality teacher share in, in the area of teaching and learning and the age of AI, in the age of artificial intelligence. It's something that, want to sort of bring together some, some thinking and some collaboration and some exchange of ideas on that. Just, I think we're at that place where we need to really start to pin down some guidelines and protocols and for our educators and really get us to a place where we're all exchanging best practice. We have a lot of educators that are, are using AI tools in really responsible ways that promote student learning, but I think bringing folks together across the district on a K-12 basis hopefully will be a powerful thing for us. The Witness Stones Project that you've heard about in the past is really gonna get underway with students just after April vacation. That's the project that will culminate with the installment of Witness Stones on the property of the First Church on the Town Green, and those are stones to commemorate the experience of enslaved individuals from Long Meadows. So really engaging project. Tracy Bradshaw, Pam Kenjemi, middle school educators that have spearheaded that. They've done an awesome job with that. A lot of curriculum work underway, summer curriculum, writing proposals are being gathered. We are in our second week of the Into Reading pilot, and so thanks to our elementary educators who are taking that work on. We're always looking at revising the elementary standards based report cards, so that is ongoing. And then some committee members may be familiar with a set of guiding principles relating to homework that we developed in 2017. Beth Nelson's pulling together a group of educators just to take a look at those guiding principles to see if they need revision or updating. Nilda Irozari and I have been sort of on a tour of our schools, meeting with administrators to see where we are in relation to our DEIB goals. The PE, Health and Wellness Framework is still being unpacked by our educators, and they are putting together revised scopes and sequences in response to that new framework in that relates to health and wellness concepts like nutrition, social-emotional learning, physical fitness, drug and alcohol prevention, education, and so I think at some point might be a good idea to bring that to the curriculum subcommittee and maybe the whole committee before the end of the year, our work in that area. We are poised to purchase an important new tool here in the district, a data warehouse called Panorama, and we have long tried to track and monitor students' progress, both academically and socially-emotionally and behaviorally. Panorama, if it's a tool that we're able to onboard, that will allow us to do it in a more systematic, systemic way. So we'll get, let you know more about that as we, as we onboard that tool, and Tom has been working hard on that, along with several of our administrators, made possible by that $93,000 SEL grant that we secured about a month and a half ago. Special education, there's a SEAL meeting tomorrow evening. Transition meetings are underway. Training for educators on the new IEP form, so lots happening there. And this is another MCAS week, and I want to give a shout out to our IT team that has worked really hard to make sure that we have good functioning supply, good supply, too, of Chromebooks for our students to use during MCAS and... And they've done a nice job making sure that our network is reliable and stable as well. It's, MCAS, as most of the folks around the table here know, is a huge undertaking and it requires a lot of administrative effort, a lot of support from our IT team. So, thanks to them. Middle School Building Committee meeting next week. Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching banquet on Tuesday, April 30th. I think Zach, you were able to join us that night if I remember correctly. And then we have another parent engagement event on May 2nd, centered on ways to combat antisemitism in schools. So that's May 2nd at 7:00 PM in the LHS auditorium. So, as Mary said, a lot going on. It is, it's a fun, busy time of year. The eclipse was amazing. Admittedly, I was worried about it and we were able to secure the glasses. Tom did a ton of work on that, making sure that we had the right glasses and the right number of glasses. And the kids embraced it, the teachers embraced it. I was over at Williams on the fields with kids and it was, it was a memorable day for sure. Really, really fun. So, yeah. So, thank you. That's it. Any questions? I've been answered.
Very well. Any questions from anyone? All right. We are rolling forward. Other administrator reports? No. Our student representative is not with us tonight, so we'll roll ahead to LPVAC.
Our March meeting was canceled, so our next meeting is April 24th, I believe?
Okay. Yes, April 24th.
So I can double check, but April 24th.
All right. Energy and Sustainability. Adam, anything from you?
There was an exciting meeting, March 26th regarding building codes and the energy used for existing structures, updating existing structures, new structures, and the criteria to be matched its code for those. Additionally, we talked about, you know, how things are going with Project YES with the money where the education grant we got from MassSave. And there was an update on municipal aggregation, as we're trying to get some competitive electricity going on. It was an electric meeting, to say the least. And next month, we're going to be having some input from the collegiate members of the Long Meadow community to see how we can improve the community from our energy and sustainability standpoint. So, if you guys want to, you know, come to a barn burner next month, that should be a hot ticket in town.
All right. Thank you. Well placed with the pawns there. All right. And then SEAL, Michaela?
As was said in the superintendent's report, tomorrow night, there is a Zoom meeting, April 10th at 7:00 PM, and it's about childhood anxiety and about special ed programming for the summer.
All right. Excellent. Heading into Subcommittee reports, we have one report from Curriculum Sub. Mary, ask that.
Yes, I did prepare a statement based on some information regarding the literacy curriculum adoption, and so I'm going to read it to you. So, under the leadership of Dr. Beth Nelson, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, thirty elementary educators are currently undergoing a pilot, as Dr. O'Shea mentioned, of two literacy programs that are grounded in the science of reading. There is considerable public focus on literacy instruction at the national, state, and local levels and the evolving needs of our students, as well as new understandings of how to best support today's students as they learn to read and write in 2024. So this was from your thank you to the Select Board. They create a compelling case for new curriculum materials. We are grateful to the Select Board who approved a warrant article directed toward funding in elementary literacy adoption at their meeting last week. A warrant article is not a mechanism we have historically used to fund a curriculum adoption. This is an unusual situation for us, one brought about by the necessary timing of this important curricular adoption, the high cost associated with adopting a reading and writing curriculum for six grade levels, more than sixty educators, and over a thousand children, and a particularly challenging budget season. So, community members, we ask that you come out to town meeting on Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium to support the warrant. The adoption of a new literacy curriculum is critically important to the students of Long Meadow Public Schools.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Very well said. All right. We are moving on to ongoing business and we have school committee assignments. Mary is currently our representative for the LPVAC Collaborative and is stepping down from that role. So, we have three meetings remaining, Wednesday, April 24th, Wednesday, May 15th, and Wednesday, June 12th, and need someone to step into that role. If anyone has any motions to appoint someone for that position.
I moved at the school committee appoint Zach Faridan to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Directors.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. With lots of seconds. Awesome. Any further discussion on this? Seeing them, one more to vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much for stepping in, Zach. Appreciate it. All right. Wonderful. Middle School Building Committee, a little update on where we are. I know you kind of already covered a little of that. Do you have a little more you wanted to add?
Certainly. Yeah. So I have a, this is not a slide deck of my creation, but a slide deck from the Building Committee meeting this past, last Wednesday. And I thought it would be helpful to the whole committee to bring you up to speed on where the Building Committee is on this project, but also, just as importantly, an opportunity for us to convey to the community where we are, where we stand with the building project. Intention would be to sort of blast out the video from this meeting so that folks can understand where we are and where the next milestones are for us. So, I'll pull up the slide deck that was, this is a version of the slide deck that was put together by our design team. Our design team is Jones and Witsett Architects, along with Colliers, our project management team. So they've been kind of guiding us through the, this critical phase that we're in relative to the building project. Some of the items that we touched on at the Building Committee meeting on April 3rd was a report on where we stood with the community forum envisioning, some feedback that we've received from faculty. We also spent a fair amount of time talking about existing conditions at both Glenbrook and Williams. I won't, I won't impose on you with that because I think that's a familiar story to this committee, that you sort of understand the existing conditions at Glenbrook and Williams, but we can touch on some upcoming scheduling events. So this is the detailed schedule. I wouldn't expect you to read the fine print here. I'd simply say that there's a number of milestones that we've crossed off and we are at a phase where it's a matter of putting together a preliminary design program. That preliminary, and this is sort of zoomed in, what was circled on the previous slide, that preliminary design program needs to be submitted to the MSBA by May 3rd. And so, included in that is the outcome of the visioning sessions that we've been engaged in, a very detailed educational plan that we're working on collaboratively as an administrative team. It's a real heavy lift. That ed plan, it's, it will wind up being about a, I'm guessing around a seventy or eighty-page document. An initial space summary, which is a very detailed spreadsheet of, that records all the existing educational and operational spaces at each building. And then, a proposal for a combined middle school arrangement. We also have to submit to the MSBA renewed evaluation of existing conditions and JWA, JWA being Jones, Witsett Architects, JWA's preliminary report on the site development requirements for the middle school project. So, we kicked off on March 8th with the middle school faculty. They were engaged in a visioning session with JWA. And then, following that, our district leadership team came together as well to start to craft a vision for the new middle school. Some of the takeaways from the visioning session with the faculty was the staff's, you know, sort of understanding of what the needs of developing middle schoolers are right now. There was a number of folks that talked about the difference between sixth graders and eighth graders and that you needed a building to account for that difference. The idea that the needs of children are very complex and that, in many cases, children are presenting worry and anxiety and that we would want a building that would be responsive to that, but also a building that is very much creates rigorous learning opportunities for, for kids. The takeaways from the district leadership meeting sort of identified some critical success factors. We talked a lot about the, the safety of the building, the lighting, the acoustics, the accessibility to the outdoors, how you can create a small building, but one that is adaptable and future-ready. We engaged in an activity called Postcards from the Future and started to do our best at looking into the crystal ball to think about the world that kids will be moving into, one that will require heightened levels of collaboration and entrepreneurship and integration of technology. The priorities, some of the priorities that we identified, including being responsive to students' social-emotional well-being, being mindful of career preparation and, and sort of some life skills, some conversation about how do you, how do you bring back in modern ways some of the skills that maybe were part of our middle school experience years ago. Takeaways, our, the, the design team visited both Glenbrook and Williams. They toured the buildings, they observed classes, they interviewed staff, and came away with some important takeaways, highlighted and bold here, some of the current environmental limitations at Glenbrook. There was considerable discussion about the importance of creating collaborative spaces for educators. I think Jared's presentation earlier from Wolf Swamp sort of demonstrated what can happen when you have those opportunities for collaboration across disciplines. Modern special education spaces, modern spaces for supporting some social-emotional programs, and again, centering the importance of collaboration between subjects. Similarly, at Williams, they observed classes, interviewed staff and students, and spent a considerable amount of time developing some of the takeaways that you see here. Some of them are, are similar to what we heard at, from, from the Glenbrook team. But, I think one of the things that struck our design team was the related arts wing at Glenbrook. I think they were impressed that that was an area where the related arts were very much on display and showcased and available and could be seen. And they contrasted that with Williams where some of the related arts spaces are sort of tucked away in ways that aren't visible to students and staff and the public. So, I think they were really, I think that was one of the things that was an aha moment for them and even for all of us as they, as they gave us that feedback. They sort of held up a mirror and pointed out some things that, that they seemed to think resonated with them when they were, when they were touring the buildings. The students had an opportunity to engage in some visioning. One of the neat activities they did was to, they laid out pictures for the students and the students could gravitate towards certain pictures and use those pictures to convey what they thought would be important, an important part of a newly-designed building. So, cool opportunity for kids to be involved in the design process at this early stage. Again, some of the takeaways more globally, how a consolidated middle school could increase the availability of programs, particularly in the specials, the related arts, creating opportunities for really deep learning, for project-based learning, for highly-engaging learning opportunities, an emphasis on community pride, an emphasis on creating opportunities for collaboration and socialization for staff and students, and ensuring that we have a building that can promote creativity and love of learning. So those are some of the, the key takeaways there. And then, a neat event, a few weeks back, a community visioning session. This was March 27th. We held it in the Business and Technology Center. And we had about fifty folks signed up and we had about forty attendees. And similarly, they engaged in the photo activity and had a chance to convey to the design team what, what their hopes and dreams were for a new facility. And some of the takeaways from that community visioning session are listed here. The outcome should be student autonomy, opportunities for exploration and discovery. I thought those were powerful phrases. How do we create space that gives kids appropriate amounts of autonomy at, at that age? Creating opportunities for hands-on learning, for celebration, for showcases of, of their learning. Safe, modern, clean, safety came out quite a bit naturally. And I think what we heard really loud and clear from the community attendees was creating the school as a community hub, that if we do wind up with a consolidated middle school at a single site, that it's an amazing opportunity to create a community hub in the same way that Long Meadow High is a, is a community hub. And again, creating spaces that provide opportunity for creativity and inspiration. So they, they sort of boiled it down to four key themes, the idea of the community hub, the idea of giving kids choice in ways that create engaging learning opportunities, ensuring that we promote educator collaboration, and ethos of place. I think it was sort of their hope, the design team's hope, that we will have a building that is reflective of the, of the community and culture of Long Meadow. Some of the quotes that came out of the, the design, the visioning, look forward to a space that the entire community feels comfortable using and accessing, both inside and out. Hope it brings our community together and that all stakeholders feel heard and represented. A space that best supports student learning, a space that allows teachers to use best practices to optimize learning. Opportunity for students to learn in a comfortable, enjoyable, and collaborative environment. Space for students to experience new, different hands-on learning opportunities, a safe and inclusive space that provides flexibility to support diverse learners. Those were some of the powerful quotes. Place where everyone is safe, a welcoming space, safety, comfort, place where kids are happy to learn, modern place accessible to all. Again, I feel like there's a tie-in to what Jared tried to represent at Wolf Swamp, that the pride, the joy, the, the learning on display that, that his video captured earlier for Wolf Swamp. So this is where, this is probably of interest to the, to the school committee and to the wider community. JWA is sort of still wrestling with some critical design questions. And how do we make sure that we, we design a building that creates equitable learning experiences that drive deep learning, drive engaging learning, drive universal design for learning, which is really a timeless approach to pedagogy? And then, building a building that, that promotes, that is committed to students' well-being, having spaces and places where kids can have their, their whole being attended to. Note that last bullet, supporting interdisciplinary teaching spaces that engaged multiple intelligences. I thought that was a, sort of a powerful bullet on, on that. Again, these are two of the questions that, that JWA is continuing to work through. Would there be additional opportunities for staff and students to engage in this process and for the wider community and the Building Committee? One of the things that we have, we have an amazing opportunity to create a place of full accessibility for special education students. So we want to be thoughtful about how we plan special education spaces. And how can that design strengthen the middle school? And how can that design strengthen the middle school community? I like the second bullet here. Designing shared spaces and circulation that encourage interaction rather than isolation. But note the parenthetical, without an open plan concept, right? Not to create the open spaces that we have at Glenbrook, but creating welcoming spaces where learning is on display. I think that's what our design team heard over and over and over. Lot of conversation around outdoor space, the fields that surround the building, having a connection, having the building be connected to the outdoors in visual ways. So those are some of the big design questions that are surfacing. To continue, you know, supporting that trajectory of a child from elementary school through high school and, you know, creating that place where kids have opportunities for enrichment and growth. How do you build a building that supports the growth and development of clubs and activities? You know, I mean, we know that those hours after school are critical to a child's growth and development. So we want a building that allows for those extracurricular activities. And notice the second bullet here, making specialized classrooms, meeting rooms, and media spaces more visible and central. I think that goes back to what I said earlier about how they were, they were sort of captivated by that related arts wing at Glenbrook. So those are some of the questions that the design team is working through. I'm going to, there's a number of slides on existing conditions at both Glenbrook and Williams. I'll spare you that because it really is just a recitation of the challenges that we're facing, the facility challenges that we're facing at both buildings. So next steps are here for you. Notice, this is an incredibly busy time for us. And we have a Building Committee meeting next Wednesday. It is during vacation week, hoping we can pull together a quorum. But the important task of reviewing the initial ed plan, reviewing the space summary, all headed towards the submission of that preliminary design proposal report on May 6th. And that goes right to the MSBA. That will require a vote of the school building committee at its meeting on May 1st. So again, some sort of where the rubber hits the road types of information for you. The JWA engaged the Building Committee in a conversation about what options to explore. So what's going to happen is on May 6th, what we submit to the MSBA will be an evaluation of possible solutions. The possible solutions, the possible options that will be evaluated or are being evaluated and will be submitted to the MSBA include number one, five, six, seven, and eight. I think the Building Committee felt strongly that the idea of just addressing one school would be, in their view, sort of a non-starter for this community, that it would create some fiscal challenges and some equity issues and perhaps even be divisive if just the needs of one of the schools was addressed. So it basically directed the design team to really look at solutions that would be available to students from both middle schools. The exception is number one, which is it's required, the MSBA requires that we study how we could bring, what it would cost to bring Glenbrook alone up to code. Just a reminder to folks who might be watching this, that the SOI Statement of Interest to the MSBA was submitted just for Glenbrook. But it's been clear right along that we're looking at a two-school solution. So that's where we are. And if you have any feedback that you'd like us to convey to the Building Committee or the Design Team, or if there are any important questions you have, we're happy to pass those along. So I thought it was important to bring the committee up to speed and the community up to speed on where we are with this amazing project. So happy to answer any questions or...
Questions, thoughts, comments? All right. It's been a great project to be able to be a part of. Every meeting, there's so much to learn. And just a thank you to JWA for the work they put into pulling this presentation together and all of the work they've done so far with the visioning for the community. And just to let folks know, in case they're not sure what these one, five, six, seven, and eight numbers mean, we will not be by May 1st deciding one of these over another. It would rather be a proposal that goes into what each of these things would entail. And then that moves forward to MSBA. And then down the road is when some final decisions get made with much more, many more community opportunities for engagement along the way.
Important footnote.
Yes. All right. Seeing no other comments, we will move on to new business. Thank you very much, Dr. Rocher. Gifts to the school. We had received a donation of Eclipse viewing glasses from the University of Massachusetts. So a big thank you for that. And we have a possible recommended motion related to that.
I move that the school committee accept with genuine appreciation the gifts to the Long Meadow Public Schools as presented on the document dated April 9th, 2024.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much again to the University of Massachusetts. It was much appreciated. And also thank you to the elementary principals and the group that are collecting those to recycle and be able to use them again at future Eclipse events. All right. Moving on to our final motion, we have a recommended motion for a move to executive session.
I move that the school committee meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings not to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. Everybody have a lovely evening, and we will see you again in a few weeks.